For those present telephonically for the record, please. Can we start with Councilmember Jocelyn Var?
Here.
Councilmember Sam DeLong?
Here.
Jennifer Cale, the clerk, you're here. Can you hear us? Any other staff members participating telephonically? Is Jennifer there, KW? Who's KW, do we know? Oh, okay. Kevin Wilson, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Jennifer Cale, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I'm sorry I lost you for a minute.
Wonderful. Okay, it looks like we have Councilmember Jocelyn Var, Councilman Sam DeLong, Clerk Jennifer Cale, and then Kevin Wilson. Anybody else present? Okay.
Can you tell me who's present there in person?
Yes, all seven councilmembers are present.
Thank you.
The additional. You're welcome.
Are there any additional people I need to note being present?
Jennifer, this is Chris Greisel. I'm present, as well as Deputy Mayor Elliott Holgren, as well as Ashley Elrod, Lisa Bradford, and Tony Vigato, and Jesse Bachele from the staff. We have several members of the public who are in attendance as well.
Great. Okay. I want to thank everybody for their patience. We're going to go ahead and start. We have a special 20-year service award. We have... Oh, sorry. Excuse me. Sorry, we're going to do the pledge. Everybody stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Okay. We do have a 20-year service award that we are honoring today, our own Chief of Police, Ed Getheart. And here to present that award is our Deputy Mayor Elliott Holcomb.
Good evening. So it's my honor this evening to fill in for Mayor Fattness to present an award to an individual who's now honorably served our community for 20 years. So Chief Ed Getheart started with the agency as a patrolman, worked his way through the ranks to patrol commander, eventually as Assistant Chief, and now, of course, as our Chief of Police. He's an FBI National Academy grad, an innovative leader who launched our Crime Watch app. And I can tell you most proudly and humbly serves as a leader of our police department. He believes in this community, leads his team honorably, and the city is blessed to have him as our chief. I also know, Ed, I've truly enjoyed the leadership conversations that you and I've had for the past two years. It's honestly one of the best parts of my days, coming to work each day and working with Chief Getheart. His wife Amy and daughter Faith are here as well. So please join Ed up here and allow us to give you a round of applause for your 20 years of service. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, I just want to say that we are fortunate to have you leading our Fishers Police Department. I've gotten to know you, and you're an exceptional leader and truly a genuine person to head up our police department. I couldn't think of anybody better. And we're very fortunate. And thank you for your many dedicated years of service to our community.
Before you guys go, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. We have some announcements this evening. June is Pride Month. And as an inclusive city, Fishers continues to stand alongside all of our residents. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Sam DeLong to read an announcement regarding Pride Month.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On behalf of the Fishers City Council, we recognize June as Pride Month. This month and always, Fishers renews its commitment to making our community welcoming to all. This commitment goes beyond public statements and social media posts, but to the policies that we have in place and the policies we continue to refine. Fishers stands with the LGBTQ+ community and acknowledges this discrimination that so often impacts these individuals. This council has always stood in unity against LGBTQ+ discrimination. In 2016, we acted by proclaiming Fishers as a community that would not stand for discrimination of any kind stemming from a person's sex, race, color, nationality, origin, religion, disability, age, or gender identity. That dedication continues today from standing alongside students and parents to advocate for comprehensive anti-discrimination policy within our school system to instilling these policies into the city's operations. This Pride Month, residents should be comforted in the fact that your city, your public safety, and your community stands with LGBTQ. And we welcome all.
Thank you, Counselor DeLong. We do have one proclamation this evening that I'm going to go ahead and read. This month is National Gun Violence Awareness Day. The City of Fishers proclamation, whereas this proclamation recognizes June 5, 2020, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day to honor all victims and survivors of gun violence and to promote awareness about gun violence and safety. And whereas, on an average, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence every day, and there are almost 13,000 gun homicides in the United States every year. And whereas, Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas promoting public safety serves the best interests for the Fishers community. And whereas, wearing the color orange has been chosen as a way to commemorate victims and survivors of gun violence. Because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange thus has been taken to symbolize the value of human life. And whereas, we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children and community safe. And whereas, anyone can observe National Gun Violence Day by wearing orange on June 5, 2020. Therefore, I, Scott Fattness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim June 5, 2020, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Fishers. And all residents are encouraged to celebrate it, signed this Fourth Day of May, 2020. Mayor Scott Fattness, City of Fishers. The next item. We have no presentations today, so we will move on to the Finance Committee. Our chairperson, John Weingard, is going to give this month's report.
Good evening, and thank you. President Koppel, the Budget Finance Committee met last Wednesday. Two items on the agenda that we recommend for approval tonight, Item 8 and Item 9. One is having a non-reverting fund for payments in lieu of open space. Another, authorizing the General Nation Bond. That's on a second and third reading. In addition, at the Budget Finance, we discussed two items that aren't on the agenda worth meriting and which will be sharing. The Health Department, where is that for the year for 2020? Deputy Mayor and his team came together and put together what they feel the projected expenditures are going to be for the Health Department. As we recall, we appropriated $2 million out of our reserves to set up our Health Department. We're projecting expenses for this year, along with some nonrecurring costs and recurring costs, total expenses of $2.1 million. In addition to that, the State of Indiana and the federal government is going to be reimbursing us for these COVID-19 tosses. Based upon our calculation, we're going to receive a reimbursement of $1.8 million. Therefore, the net amount of the cost, if you will, for the Health Department for 2020 is about $255,000. In addition, we looked out at projecting 2021. We have a revenue component, but I've asked the Deputy Mayor to put together an expense budget as well. Right now, we project revenues for 2021 from the Health Department to be $936,000. We feel that the expenses will come in action, that we'll probably have a surplus in the Health Department for 2021, but we're waiting for some expenses that the Deputy Mayor is going to put together for us. Additionally, there was a brief conversation about Geis Park, that potential down the road that we may have come before the council and an opportunity for a ban to start that process. What's a ban is a bond anticipation note where we pay interest only and we use those funds to start the process. So that is the essence of the Budget Finance Committee meeting last Wednesday.
Thank you, Counselor Weingard. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. It consists of one item this evening. It's a request to approve the regular meeting minutes from the council's May 18, 2020, meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Pete Peterson. Do I have a second? Second by Todd Zimmerman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We're going to move on to the regular agenda. This is Ordinance 061520A. It's an ordinance of the common council amending the City of Fishers Code regarding the City of Fishers Health Department. Tonight, this is simply first reading of several chapters of the Fishers Health Code. And now I will turn it over to Chris Greisel for his presentation to the council.
This is awkward. It's like addressing the bench. Good evening. For the record, Chris Greisel, Attorney for the City of Fishers. As Council President Koppel mentioned, I'm here tonight to discuss Ordinance 061520A, which is regarding first reading of the initial phase of our health code, which is going to cover five separate chapters related to retail food establishments, public pools, septic tanks, communicable diseases, and a miscellaneous fee schedule. So as you are all aware, on April 24, 2020, the City Council approved the establishment of the Health Department and also allocated certain funds towards the creation of that department. The Health Department operates as an agency of local government, administratively responsible to the mayor and is managed by a Board of Health who prescribes the duty of all officers and employees, establishes the budget, and provides policy direction to the department. Additionally, the department has a health officer who provides medical direction and serves as the executive officer of the department. From a legal perspective, the Health Department operates under the purview of three sets of laws and rules that kind of guide it. First, you have Indiana law, state statutes that manage local health departments across the state. But then you have the Indiana Administrative Code, where the State Department of Health has promulgated hundreds, if not 1,000 or plus pages, of administrative rules that govern every division of the Health Department and the services that they provide. And then finally, we have our local Health Department regulations that we're here to talk about tonight. So in general, Indiana law provides health departments with broad authority, as I mentioned, that are further specified by this administrative code that's been promulgated by the State Department of Health. For example, Indiana law provides that each health department has the responsibility and the authority to take any action authorized by statute or rule of the State Department to control communicable diseases. All right? So that's a fairly broad mandate. However, the administrative code supplements that broad mandate and provides greater specificity and detail. For example, there's over 197 pages of administrative code dedicated to food and drug, which for this health department is going to prescribe how the Health Department goes out and regulates retail food establishments within our city. Another example, there's over 130 pages that are dedicated to communicable diseases. So when communicable diseases arise, the administrative code specifically details how, as a health department, we're supposed to go out and investigate these communicable diseases and what our response should be towards each disease. So by and large, the administrative code is the department's marching orders. Local codes, which are the final layer, are primarily established for three reasons. One is to permit certain activity within our community and collect fees for those permits. Two is to apply an additional local mechanism for addressing noncompliant activity, which could be in the form of fines, permit suspension, permit revocation, or other civil action. And then finally, by choosing to be more restrictive than certain aspects of Indiana law or that administrative code. So tonight, I'm simply introducing five chapters of the Health Code. And as I mentioned, these pertain to retail food establishments, public pools, septic tanks, communicable diseases, and a miscellaneous fee schedule. This is not the complete Health Code. The Health Department believes that the chapters being introduced tonight were those that address the subject matters that are most frequently being addressed by the department and are therefore the most prominent to get established. You can expect, probably before the end of the year, that I'll be coming forward with further chapters of the Health Code for your consideration. I know there's a lot of information before you tonight. Before next month's meeting, I plan to conduct a work session where myself and members of the Health Department will walk through in detail each chapter that's before you tonight and will specifically provide some context to how that chapter helps support that division of the Health Department and the regulated fields that are before it. So again, there'll be plenty of time to review this first phase of the Health Code and go over it in sufficient detail. So with that, I would respectfully ask that the council give this first reading and look forward to a discussion in July.
Thank you, Chris. Do I have a motion to have first reading on Ordinance 061520A? Motion by Pete Peterson for first reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
This ordinance is going to come back to the council next month for further review. So now we're going to move on to Item 8 on the agenda. This is Ordinance 061520. It's an ordinance of common council establishing a non-reverting fund for payments in lieu of open space. Over the past few months, this council has gone through the process of approving the payment in lieu of open space standards and have codified that process within the city's UDO. Now, the Controller's Office is before us to simply establish the dedicated account for these payments. And so I'm going to turn it over to Lisa Bradford for her presentation.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. As was mentioned earlier in May, the council adopted Ordinance Number 021720C, which established the payment in lieu of open space. And with that, we are attempting to establish this non-reverting fund. Basically, what this does is simply set aside these payments that we will receive for payment in lieu of open space into their own fund that then will be used, as described in the ordinance, reimbursing or paying the city for commissioning installation, maintenance, and programming of public art throughout the city, or paying or reimbursing the city for capital construction, maintenance, or other improvements to nearby regional parks. And this, by doing a non-reverting fund, it allows this fund to essentially continue in essence, and it does not require an annual budget. So one of the things that happens with funds of this type, it's extremely hard to budget for. You can never really say how much you're going to get from year to year. And by doing a non-reverting fund, it allows the city the flexibility to spend that money when it comes in as needed and as approved. Any questions?
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve the Ordinance 061520 on first reading? Motion by Pete Peterson. Second by John Weingard. All those in favor suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 061520? Motion by... So moved by Pete Peterson. Do I have a second? Second by John Weingard. I'm going to open it up now for any discussion. I want to start with those councilmembers participating electronically first. Counselor Sam DeLong, do you have any comments?
No comments or questions.
Okay. Counselor Jocelyn Var, do you have any comments?
I do have a question. The payment in lieu of open space is an option for developers. And there's two zones. Residential developers can elect to pay a fee. To the fee in exchange for a smaller minimum open space standard, and that fee supports parks. And then commercial developers elect to pay a fee in exchange for a smaller minimum open space standard. That fee would support public art. So my question is simply, is this just one fund for both sides? Or will it be divided and split, designated in a split?
It's one fund, but within the fund, we have different... The ability with our financial system to do different departments and different divisions. So we'll do one actual fund. And then within it, there will be divisions, one for the park piece of it and one for the public art piece of it. So in essence, you can track what was attributable to commercial developers and should go to the respective, you know, art or parks. And you can track vice versa. So you can track them separately.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Are there any comments from councilmembers present right now? Looks like there's not. So I'm going to call a vote on Ordinance 061520. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
One nay by Todd Zimmerman. Motion passes. We're going to move on to Item Number 9. It is Ordinance 051820. It's amending Ordinance Number 032320A, which authorizing... It's authorizing general obligation bonds of the City of Fishers. And last month, the council approved Resolution R051820A, whereby the council declared its official intent to reimburse certain project expenditures with general obligation bond proceeds. And now the council is considering responding amendment to the bond ordinance. So last month, our council conducted one reading on this ordinance, and it held its statutory required public meeting. No members of the public testified at the hearing, nor did any members tender written comments to the council regarding this hearing. I'm now going to turn it over to Lisa Bradford for her presentation to the council.
Thank you. The item before you is the exact same item that came before you last month. It's up for a second and third reading and essentially its final adoption. As was mentioned, it's the intent to use the general obligation bonds to reimburse some capital costs for Fire Station 91. As was mentioned, it was unanimously approved last month. And so we're hoping for its final reading and official adoption this month.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance 051820? Motion to approve by Todd Zimmerman. Do I have a second? Second by Pete Peterson. So now I'm going to open it up for discussion. I'll start with the councilmembers participating telephonically. Councilmember Sam DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
None from... Sorry, none from me.
Okay. Counselor Jocelyn Var, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes. This action increases the amount of a loan, a bond, from $2.2 million to $4.7 million. And last month, the City Council approves this additional $2.5 million into this bond. And I get that. What I still don't get is what the $2.5 million was for. And my confusion was I asked a question at our last City Council meeting. And Mayor Fattness replied that the $2.5 million was for cost overages for the recent construction of new Fire Station Number 9. That's one by City Hall. And Fire Station Number 93, that's one by the airport. So my question is, because these documents in front of us don't reflect that, the council action form says improvements to Fire Station 91. And the draft ordinance says design and demolition, renovation, rehabilitation, and equipping of Fire Station 91. So I know these documents need to be precise and have the specific reason for the $2.5 million. So if I'm understanding this right, I need to make a motion that the ordinance, Section 1, and affiliated council action form be corrected to state specifically what the $2.5 million is for. There was a discrepancy there.
Councilmember Var, this is Chris Greisel, City Attorney. I can jime in there a little bit. So the conversation that Mayor Fattness had with the council last month, and perhaps where the confusion is coming from, was generally stemming towards his approach to dealing with some of the cost overruns with Fire Station 91 and with Fire Station 93. Not that this ordinance and the additional bond proceeds applied to both. The additional bond proceeds always applied to Fire Station 91, as was approved in the resolution that the council unanimously approved last month and as is stated in the bond ordinance in front of you here tonight. As the mayor mentioned last month, the city had always had these additional costs for Fire Station 91 planned for with cash reserves. But due to the COVID crisis, the city thought it was prudent to free up our cash reserves, not knowing the unpredictability of what the COVID crisis would do. And due to the favorable refinancing climate that we find ourselves in, we were able to take in these additional costs, the $2.5 million, while still maintaining a tax-neutral position. And then we freed up that additional cash reserves to deal with our COVID crisis.
Okay, so I just want to be precise about this. What you're saying is this is about Fire Station 91 only.
Correct.
So... But it is specifically a cost overage. It's additional cost over the project budget. My concern is simply, the language reads as it is the entire project, and it's not. And I would like to be more precise about this to understand what the $2.5 million is for. If I don't get it after two meetings, how will taxpayers, right? So accuracy is important. And I'm talking about this $2.5 million cost overage. And I'm talking about this 2.5 million cost overage. I know, yeah, can we make this language more precise so it's clear that this is not the entire Fire Station 91 project and simply this overage or overrun? I don't know how you state it.
Well, so with construction projects, Councilmember Var, I mean, costs and expenses that come to the city don't occur on a linear perspective. So we have budgets for the fire station. And as the mayor mentioned last month during the meeting, when we went to size those bonds, which occurred, you know, several months prior to that project, when construction costs were estimated at X and turned out to be Y, we did need additional funds. The reason why the wording is addressed the way that it is specifically in subpoint number two, to address Fire Station 91, is to account for all those additional costs for the construction project, such that those additional costs plus the amount that we have pledged towards the fire station are enough to complete the entire project.
I mean, I hear what, I'm sorry, I hear what you're saying, but it doesn't read that it is in addition to the original project.
Well, let me state this, that these are, our bond ordinances are not just written here by the city of Fishers. They are written by our bond council of Barnes and Thornburg, who have specialized in the bond law and have written these as the ordinances and the state of Indiana laws require. So they're written specifically to match the requirements that the state of Indiana has regarding bond ordinances and descriptions and project descriptions.
It's not very precise. However, maybe to move forward, is it possible that simply our meeting minutes for today states specifically what the 2.5 million is for? And that means to say, Fire Station 91, cost overrun, done.
Pete, I think you made a motion. I would ask for a second. If there's a second on the motion you made, to change the line. If not, then we can move forward in one way or another.
Is there a second to your motion, Counselor Var?
Well, no, I'm so sorry. I'm withdrawing the motion, which was to adjust the language in the ordinance and the council action form. I see that that's not.
Is that your motion? Are you?
She withdrew.
No, now, excuse me, now simply, my request is that the meeting minutes for today states specifically what the $2.5 million is for, which is Fire Station 91, cost overrun, done. So that's not a motion, that's just a request for the meeting minutes, if you please.
Counselor Var, some of these questions have been answered by both attorneys, the city and our bond attorney, prior to the meeting.
Yeah, well, and thank you for addressing my questions. If I, if I had that resolution on it, I wouldn't ask the question again. So thank you for indulging me.
If I could make just a quick comment, and again, this is Pete speaking. I think Jocelyn put herself on record of stating what she stated. That makes it clear to her. I believe it's very crystal clear in that relation received from the mayor, we surprise for an Antler City Attorney, as well as the bond attorneys, that we're well within compliance of Indiana statute and the bond law that there is. I also say we have a motion and a second on the court. She has it verbal, and it's been recorded for history here, that it's on there. So I'm sure Jennifer will pick that up in the notes, but I'm going to ask for, does there's any other comments?
We don't have a second, right?
No, we don't have a second. So we're going to go ahead.
Of what?
She withdrew it. She withdrew it.
Somebody said it first and a second, so I just want to make sure.
You made the motion, I made the second.
Okay.
Call for the question. I have a question.
Okay. So seeing that there isn't any more comments, I will now ask for a vote on ordinance 051820. Is there, is there, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Looks like the ayes have it. Motion passes.
Excuse me, Councilman Cobal, who made the motion, who seconded it? Because some of you don't have speaker, your speakers on and I can't hear.
Todd made the motion, Jennifer, and it was seconded by Pete.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you made the motion?
Todd Zimmerman made the motion. It was seconded by Pete Peterson.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. We're going to move on to item 10, under planning and zoning. This is a first reading of ordinance 051820B. This is the Grantham PUD. It's a request to rezone two properties that consist of 154 acres and are located at the corner of 113th Street and Southeastern Parkway. The ordinance was presented during last month's council meeting. And after several questions from the council, the petitioner agreed to revisit the PUD and has brought it back tonight for first reading. So I'm going to turn it over to Jessie Boshell with the city's planning and zoning department.
For the record, Jessie Boshell with the planning and zoning department. The item before you, as you said, was the, is the continuous of the first reading of ordinance number 051820B, Grantham PUD. This, during this time between last meeting and this meeting, the county, the petitioner has had the chance to meet with the nearby neighbors, which has resulted in some changes. Subject site is located at the corner of Southeastern Parkway and 113th Street. There are two properties that include five parcels included in the overall project that are zoned R2 and ER and consist of 158 acres, and Platinum Properties is the petitioner. And as such, they are rezoning, they are seeking to rezone the project, the property to PUDR. Next slide. Of the 158 acres, 147 of those acres are, in the proposed, are currently zoned R2, with 11 being zoned ER. Next slide. The proposed planned unit development will consist of 290 lots on 158 acres, and will have a mixture of lot sizes and housing sizes. The 290 is an overall reduction from the 314 that was originally proposed last month. And there will be three districts, each with different lot sizes. The lot sizes will range from 50 to 90 feet wide, and lots with, will range from 6,000 square feet to 11,700 square feet. And the developer plans to use three different home builders, and will be maintaining much of the natural area that exists. Lots in District A here on the west side, over here on the southwest side, near Nestle Down Farms, will actually have lots that are 33% larger than what we require in our UDO for R2. So they will be a minimum of 20,000 square feet, so that they go with that area of the estate lots, maintaining the character of the area. The development will include a 10-foot wide perimeter path along Southeastern Parkway and 113th Street, adding to the overall city of Fishers trail system. And the development will be incorporating an eight-foot path throughout the subdivision, activating a substantial amount of open space. Next slide. The developer will be incorporating the existing wall and entryway with the guardhouse that currently exists on 113th Street as part of the Becker Estate. This feature will be a key feature of the subdivision entrance, and they will be incorporating the beautiful tree canopy that exists along 113th Street to add to the natural area of the subdivision. Next slide. These are some renderings, just to show you conceptual elevations of District A. The underlying zoning for District A will be R3, with lot sizes, as I said, 11,700 square feet, and next to Nestle Down Farms, 20,000 square feet. Single-story, 1,800; two-story, 2,400. Next slide. District B minimums will be R5 standards with a lot size of 9,000 square feet. Single-story will be 1,800 square feet; two-story, 2,200. And these homes in District A and District B will be ranging from anywhere from 425,000 to 550,000-plus. Next slide. This is District C. Last month, this was the district that had paired patio homes that were included. Those since have been moved, or removed from the project due to concerns from neighbors. So District C will be geared, still be geared towards empty nesters, but lot sizes will be 6,000 square feet, and single-story, 1,600 square feet; two-story, 2,000 square feet. Next slide. Just to give you some reference, our comp plan calls for this area to be designated as low-density suburban. As such, densities for developments in this area would range from one, one to two dwelling units per acre. Or by comp plan standards, at two units per acre, they could have 316 houses in this development, if, you know, as go in the future. Next slide. Just to recap, there are 290 dwelling units being proposed for this project, or 1.84 dwelling units per acre, with the current zoning that's there by right. 261 lots are allowed by right, or 1.7 for the properties zoned R2, or one for ER. And our UDO states that land with, R2 can have a maximum of 1.7 dwelling units per acre, giving us this 261. Next slide. We have received quite a bit of public comment, most of it being about traffic concerns on Southeastern Parkway, due to the entrances that are shown on the concept plan, as well as the, just the amount of traffic that's already on there. We also have had some concerns about the amount of development that is happening in this area, and the amount of rooftops going up, and the overcrowding of schools that could be created by this. The duplexes and paired patio homes were a concern, but that has since been removed, as I said. Next slide. Due to the concerns that were related to traffic, we had our engineering staff and A&amp;F Engineering do a onsite visit, as well as look over the concept plan. And that was sent to you earlier today, a letter from Steve Fairbach with A&amp;F Engineering. Regarding the entrances, at first look, their entrances locations are fine. That will be something that will be looked at during the technical phase of this project, if we get to that point, where we, they will be heavily involved, but they do not see any issues at first glance, as well as the traffic volume not being an issue due to 113th Street not being heavily trafficked. Engineering has also stated that additional right-of-way will be needed in the future for the corner of 113th Street and Southeastern Parkway, both at the northwest and northeast corner for a roundabout. So the need for additional right-of-way is needed because of the floodplain and floodway that exist in the area. So, and engineering hopes to have a concept exhibit for the petitioner soon. Next slide. As part of the rezone process, the petitioner will be annexing this land into the city of Fishers, and the Department of Planning and Zoning is supportive of the project and believes it will be complementary to the surrounding area. Changes that have been made to the ordinance were as a result of concerns voiced by the surrounding neighbors. And if approved, this will start the construction phase late 2020. And staff recommends holding first reading and sending to Plan Commission for public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jessie. Do I have a motion to have first reading on ordinance 051820B? So moved by Pete Peterson, so it's given a first reading. Are there any additional comments or questions that council might have? Counsel, Counselor Sam DeLong?
Yeah, I just have one question. I know building costs can change when it's a duplex and a single. Is there going to be a change in price from what was shown on the original document?
Sam, could you repeat the question, please?
Sorry. Is there going to be a change in price in the group C homes now that they are not duplexes, or will the price remain the same?
Does, does the petitioner like to come up, or Jessie would like to come to answer the question? We're now going to have Steve Harden come up, the petitioner. Would you please introduce yourself for the record?
I will. Good evening, President Cobal, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Faygre Drinker, proud resident here in the city of Fishers, and I'm pleased to be seeing all of you in person for the first time in about three months. So it's, we've been doing virtual meetings all across central Indiana for the last three months, and this is our first, my first in-person meeting. So I'm going to, if I can, just take a back, back up just a moment to give everybody a full update. It won't take very long from our discussions, and then I'll answer Councilman DeLong's question. And Tracy, thank you so much for your help up there. So let's just kind of go to, go to the first exhibit that you've got. Just keep going through there, Tracy. Thank you, keep going. Yeah, that's good for right there, for right now. So when we were here last, last month, and we talked about the property, Jessie did a great job explaining the background of it. We did have, we had tried for two times, sending out letters to the neighbors to have neighbor meetings, kept getting canceled because of COVID. We eventually had, a couple weeks ago, we had a virtual meeting via Zoom, and it was okay. Still not as good as being able to meet in person. We had probably seven or eight of the neighbors were on the Zoom meeting. And then Paul Rio, a Fishers resident, his company's located here, who's the developer, he then had follow-up contacts with anyone that wanted to have him come out and walk their property line. So those meetings are getting set for next week. So as we go between now and Plan Commission, those members on the Plan Commission should expect to hear from us after how those individual meetings go when they walk the property line. Some of the things that were the key issues that came up from the neighbor meeting, the number one issue was to asking to remove the duplexes. And secondly, was traffic. There was concern about transition and overcrowding of schools, and some things like that. So we had a number of pieces of homework for ourselves. And so thank you, Jessie and the staff, for Steve Fairbach's memo. I do want to give an update. Tracy, if you could scroll down a little bit more. So right here, stop there, please. Thank you, Tracy. So this was the concept plan that was presented last month. It's dropped on an aerial, and you can see the, a couple of the big, the more significant changes to the concept plan along 113th Street. I'm not sure what the easiest way. There was an entrance over here, which is along 113th Street and District C. And then there's also two entrances shown last month on Southeastern Parkway. In response to some of the questions about traffic and how the, where the entrances were located, that northern entrance along Southeastern Parkway is right at the bottom of the hill. So any cyclist or anyone that lives or has been out in that area, you know that people will come down that, and it's a pretty sharp turn. So one of the concerns was, is that the appropriate location? We do understand the comment that A&amp;F had, they were reviewing these, these entrances. But Paul Rio went ahead and said, let's just change that. So you'll see if we scroll down a little bit. There's the zoning, current zoning map. And again, we talked about the current comp plan. Thank you, just keep going. One more, I think. So here is, if you're able to just zoom in just a little bit. Thank you, Tracy. That's excellent. So you can see along Southeastern, there's just one entrance. Now that's been moved down toward, oh no, that was good the way you had it before. Yeah, thank you, Tracy, yeah. So the, there's a planned roundabout in the location here at, right here, at 113th and Southeastern Parkway on the city's thoroughfare plan, is planned for a roundabout. That's what Jessie mentioned, the engineering, mentioned that too in our pre-filing meeting months ago, that the plan was for a roundabout, and that there may be some additional right-of-way. Engineering department mentioned that to us a few months ago. So Paul Rio believes he's already accommodated for that, but if there's something new, just let us know what it is, and they have the flexibility to accommodate that as well. But we also had some, you know, question, I think there's a shared interest from the city council, and particularly Councilmember Peterson and Weingart, Councilman Weingart also both particularly emphasized, both during last month's council meeting and in a follow-up, about maintaining the, the look and feel and the aesthetics along 113th Street here. One of the things that's interesting, when you go out and you drive the area, right along 113th Street in front of this property, is the beautiful landscape or canopy of all the trees. Once you pop out past the tree line, maybe people can't hear me. Once you get past the tree line, it becomes a corn and bean field. So one of the things that was discussed, well, what can we do with this project to not just maintain the existing attractive canopy and the columns and the fencing that's there today, but what can we do to extend that? And so Paul Rio has agreed that what we'll do is, we'll extend the columns and the fencing that's all out there existing, and to do more than just the normal landscaping, make it really lush and attractive, so that that'll grow. If anybody's driven out there recently, it's interesting, if you look at the intercoastal, there's a good example of the different types of trees that are planted, and then the different speed within which they grow. So the next time anyone's out there driving to take a look at this site, if you see, you'll see the evergreen trees that are there at the intercoastal are 20, 30, 40 feet tall already. And the deciduous trees are significantly shorter than that. So there's some things we can do, working with the staff and on the landscaping. So that's something that's going to happen. But we also, as you can see, removed that entrance on 113th Street. So there was two entrances before 113th Street. That's been removed, and then just the one entrance up on, on a, on Southeastern, in that District C area. One of the other things that came up during the neighbor virtual meeting, one of the neighbors at, they said, well, we can't even walk along 113th Street right now ourselves. There's no trails or part, or paths along there. And so then, you know, we had shown on our plan that we'll be doing our part by putting the trails, the perimeter trails along 113th Street and along Southeastern. But it gave me the nudge or the notion to think about, well, is there something we can do as part of this project? And so I reached out to Sarah Sandquist last week, the Parks Director, and we had, we'd begun the discussion about whether the city would like to see this developer install a, the trail, not just where, in front of their property, but all the way down to the agri park. And so that would be a benefit not only to this development, but to the other people that live along 113th Street to provide connection. We might be able to do that in exchange for park impact fee credits. When I talked to Sarah about that, she also said, well, what about connecting not just along 113th Street to the agri park, but what about connecting south of 113th Street to the new trail connection plan? And Tracy, I don't know if you're able to pull up that extra email I sent you, just to talk about the parks for just a second. That's super impressive. So this site, to orient you, is in the red outline, and that's 113th and Southeastern Parkway. And if you've, anyone on the Parks Committee will be very familiar with all this, but if you could just pull back out just a little bit there, Tracy. This particular piece of property, Grantham, is located within extremely close proximity to four of the, four or five different parks. So at the very far north is Cynthia Park, right off of Cynthiaan Road and Southeastern Parkway. To the south is the, at the, the bottom, let's see, as you're looking at it, the bottom right, yeah, right there, that is the Township's Park, and their plan for their connection. The Geist Park is at the bottom left of the screen, that's the County Park. And then the Agri Park is there at the top left. And then we also have Flat Ford Creek Park down there along 101st Street. All these parks are right nearby. And then there's the plan to connect Township Park, the Township Park with the Agri Park. That's the red dashed trail that you see going east and west, from the Township Park over to the Agri Park. So it's a long-winded way of getting back around to the idea that was spurred by one of the neighbors talking about, well, they can't even walk along 113th Street now. Perhaps we can extend that as part of our project. And then Sarah's thought of, is there a way to go south and also to provide a connection to what's going to be a super cool park and trail plan going east and west? So all of that is to be continued, but again, it was, we were thankful to, we always learn something, and taking a pause was a, was a good idea to be able to kind of check in with people. We've got a number of neat ideas that we're trying to work through with respect to that. There's also a question about the schools. I've served on the school advisory board in the past, so Dr. Borf was on our comprehensive plan committee, that John, I think, was on that with, on our same committee as I was. And so one of the things that was a concern about schools, you know, it's not like, we're not like Westfield, which is facing the beginning of the uptick of all their housing and all their students. There was a demographics study done here in Fishers a few, a couple years ago for handling southeastern schools. We've pretty much leveled off. It's anticipated over the next 10 years that the school district will probably It's anticipated over the next 10 years that the school district will probably have about 500 and some less students over the next 10 years, because a lot of people are like me, where, you know, 15, 20 years ago, we had three kids who were in the school system. They're now out from their twenties and are out of school, but we still live here in the same house. So that some of that demographic makes a lot of sense. If you could go back to the packet, thank you very much, to answer Councilman Delong's question for about District C. No, those are going to be the same price anticipated. Those were always planned to be empty nester, single-family detached. And so those were always anticipated to be that way. In discussions with the staff early on, the staff asked if there was an opportunity to include the paired patio homes as an opportunity to be able to provide a missing middle type of offering. And the developer was open and willing to include that as an option. But then again, as we met with the neighbors and the neighbors expressed desire that that was not included, Paul Rio agreed to remove that. So that's in your packet today as being removed. The other thing, if you could, if you, yeah, right there is fine. Stay there, Tracy, please. So you see the lots that have the asterisks? Those are along, next to Nestle Down Farms. Nestle Down Farms was developed, it's a six-lot neighborhood, was developed about 21 years ago. Three homes have been built over the last 21 years. So there are three lots that have not been built on yet. Those are, four of the lots are about two and a half acres, two of the lots are about five acres. And so two of those property owners, the ones that Paul is meeting with next week, Paul Rio, to walk the property line. What he's agreed to do there, those ones with the asterisk, so there's owned R2 today. So the lot requirements are 100 foot wide by 150 deep. And so what he's agreed to do is to make those 250, 200 feet deep. So that makes those 20,000 square foot lot minimum. So that's about 33% larger than what's required today if it was just platted. And then the asterisk also will indicate as he goes out to walk with them, he's going to have continued discussions with some additional architectural requirements for those, for those homes. And there's also about 20 to 50 significant trees that are planted on the existing property that would probably get cut down and thrown into a chipper if it was just developed normally. And Paul Rio thinks that he is able to try to save a lot of those and then would relocate those also to the property line adjacent to Nestle Down Farms. So that's a plan that he's doing. One of the other things, again, the benefit of working with the city and the planning department on a PUD ordinance in this context is that the zoning currently is R2. So it can be developed for the lots similar to the density that Jesse mentioned before. One of the benefits is by being able to have some flexibility in the development standards, we're saving significant amount of trees and woodlands. Sometimes you'll hear a project, it's all on the floodplain, you couldn't have developed that anyway. Here, we've got some significant areas. Just north of area, District A, like here, this whole area, it's probably about 10 acres of woodlands that could have easily been developed. And so you could have had additional lots. The plan originally was to connect this northern area, I think it's here. I know the folks on video probably can't see me making motions with that. But that's, that's just an example of the benefits of working through with a PUD ordinance. And we've talked several times that, you know, the only reason the city council should ever want to entertain a PUD ordinance is if it's better for the community overall than what would happen if you just platted it. So here, the key issues are, we're having a better site plan with a variety of homes. If this was platted for all 100-foot wide lots, you would have a homogenous, exactly all the same size and style of lots and homes. This allows to be able, you can pull back out a little bit, Tracy. Thank you. This allows to have the three different kind of stages of homes, create a better vibrancy. And then we've talked about the commitment in the packet as well. So it's Drees and Weekly are the two builders that are proposed. And those home plans that they have are being committed to as the homes will be substantially similar in quality and character to those. And in this District A, it's anticipated those will be between $550,000 and $700,000. And then we talked before about the price points for the other two areas. I believe that is all the updates I wanted to give you. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Sam Delong, do you have any other questions or comments?
No, that's it.
Okay. Counselor Jocelyn Varr, do you have any questions for Mr. Harden?
I have a few questions about this proposal. I think I'll echo neighbors' concerns. Before I mention those very briefly, I want to mention just the planning process in general. I've only been on the council for a few months, but I can see that it would be helpful to have a specific and strategic housing plan for our community without a clear future of our communities.
Would you move into a chair? Would you be more comfortable? All right. If you just stand up and slide over here, then I'll move the bed out of the way.
I think we've lost you, Councilor Vare.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just, very briefly, I think someone needs to...
Unfortunately, this wasn't planned, so I'm in the middle of a council meeting.
Hey, I think you need to mute.
Jennifer Hale, could you please mute yourself, please? Thank you.
It's Jocelyn again. I'm going to continue again briefly. My, with, without a clear plan for a community's desired housing stock, the city must react to developers' priorities. And I, I think developers ought to be responding to the community's priorities.
Tracy, Tracy can unmute it?
I'm sorry, Councilor Vare, we're having a little bit of a difficulty hearing you because I think we're good now.
May I try one more time?
Sure, you're, you're good now.
The bottom line, the question I'm always going to ask is how a proposal like this meets a genuine community housing need? And I've, I've heard that as long as a project presents a improvement to just plating it, however slight that improvement should be, it should be approved. But for me, I don't think that's a good enough measuring stick. We should be setting the bar high and encouraging developers to meet us up there. I support the city planning department and their hope for diverse housing in Fishers. We see a need for housing options that fit all life stages and a balance of housing options, but the planning department should be equipped with the tools to communicate what our community's housing priorities really are, especially as conversations are started up with developers. And as a city council, for me, I would be better equipped to facilitate the city's objectives and support them. So I just wanted to make a comment, a strategic housing plan to use as a measuring, measuring stick, I think would be helpful in regard to this project. Traffic, safety, HSE school impacts, all important. My question again, how does this proposal meet the genuine housing need, especially since several nearby housing developments are still under construction nearby? Lastly, I would like to bring up the possibility that this proposed development harms the character of this special area in Fishers. It's a remarkable place. And I wonder if the petitioner would entertain much more of a natural buffer between the neighbors and this development. I would be in favor of decreasing the scope of the project to include just the original 150 acres only. I'm wondering if you forego acreage to the west of Southeastern Parkway, if that would remove traffic impact on Southeastern, which is a grave concern. So in short, this is an idea to accomplish the objective of retaining the quiet, natural character of this area that people cherish.
Thank you, Councilor Vare. Are there any other comments from the other council members? Councilmember Brad DeRimer?
Yeah, there's a couple. I expressed it, Steve, four years ago when I was involved on...
Brad, can you grab your microphone?
Hello, hello? Okay. Counselor DeRimer, four years ago, when I was involved with Jeff Hill, the city engineer, the thoroughfare plan was Cynthia Ann was supposed to go due south through this property and the owner didn't want it through his property. So for some reason, it got taken off, which I think is a huge mistake. You need north-south and east-west routes to move your traffic, especially with the development we have in the northeast quadrant. I assume, I asked Jason, but I have not got a response. Is it too late to put that back into this project? And I still would like to have that considered. But the other consideration, Steve, thanks for taking the entrances off, one off of 13th and one off of Southeastern. Back on those two that you still have, I'm assuming, and this is an assumption, if anybody knows, if we have the right-of-way, are you going to put the left-turn lanes in on both of those entrances and the passing blisters on Southeastern?
The developer will have to do that. Yes, sir.
Okay. And now, on 113th, you may have a problem with the passing blister because that's county. You guys don't own it. That's only a 33-foot wide or 66-foot wide right-of-way. So what are we going to do on 113th to get a left-turn lane in there?
So I believe, my understanding from talking with Steve Fairbuck is that, and what we talked about with the engineering department at the beginning of the process was, we don't want to do that. We want to try to keep that tree canopy the way it is. So I believe what Steve Fairbuck's firm is recommending is no passing blister on 113th Street to keep that so that we can maintain the slower speed and the canopy of trees there, so we don't have to clear-cut like what happened on Connecticut Avenue with the Vermillion Project when the county was in charge. That looked almost like what this did and almost all those trees had to come out. And so, Councilman DeRimer, I don't believe he's recommending a passing blister on 113th.
Then would you be better than moving the entrance down to the east where the trees are not, so that you can get your passing blister in there?
Anything's open on the table to...
Because then your main north-south road would just come straight out.
There's, Tracy, I don't know if you have the ability to put the concept plan up. There's the, there's ability to move that entrance. There's problem, if you go to the concept plan, please, Tracy? Maybe one, one or two more, please? Thank you. Yeah, that's it. So I'll need to check with Paul Rio on it, but I believe...
I forgot my pointer, I'm sorry. But you see, your, your, your north-south road, your main one, just bring that out to 113th and then we've accomplished the, right, thank you, Tracy, right there. Then you've accomplished your passing blister, you still maintain your trees. We're, we're not doing a good job with traffic in Fishers. We're allowing these developers, because they don't own the other side, no passing blister, and we're creating problems. I'll guarantee you that because I hear from 2,000 people from Britton Falls trying to get around because they're retired and they got the time to get around. So I hear about it. So I'm telling you, I do not want anything else approved unless it has a left-turn lane and a passing blister, because we're just asking for trouble down the road. We may not need it today, but we're going to need it tomorrow. And Southeastern, I'm scared to death, people are doing 55, 60 miles an hour and that. And if we don't have some long left-turn lanes with passing blisters, we're asking for trouble.
Well, we're, we're at the, whatever the city ends up telling us that we have to do on 113th Street, we'll comply with. And that's, 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 we've, we've discussed possibly moving that down. I don't know that that's going to get us out of the tree line. I believe the tree line comes from here. So, but we definitely understand that and we have a shared interest in making sure it's done right and maintained the best we can. So we'll, we'll do, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just quickly, Brad, and I'm going to reserve most of my comments for Planning Commission where we sit, because I will have some more comments there. But, and I walked down with this thing, I understand exactly what you're saying. There's not enough room to throw a passing blister in. I talked to Paul about it. The problem is if we shift it down to the east there, you're running into a creek, which is going to bring an eye down and all sorts of nasty stuff which goes on with those guys. Yeah, as further you go there to the east side, because I suggested that too. We are going to try to take a look at the widths there to find out if there's any way to put a passing blister. But, you know, it's not horrifically, that road is not horrifically traveled now, but I understand your concerns. But I'll reserve the rest of them for Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I think we have, we have another question, Counselor David George.
Sorry. Just, just had a few, and again, it's first reading and this is more for comments. So you guys can take it to the Plan Commission and just kind of run it back. But thank you, Jesse, in your, in your presentation, because one thing I was wondering about was what is the right versus, of number of lots versus the PUDs? So that'd help me to kind of have that, that understanding going forward when it comes back. And then also, Steve, when you had, and this is just more of a comment, this is the engineer in me, when you said that if it was not a PUD and it was developed through, you've got that little kind of park area in the middle, I don't know if those blue lines mean actually blue line streams, because it's a little bit more intricate. If it was a stream, you can't just, I'm just saying that if it was an R2, you might not be able to necessarily pave all the way through and do all that. So that's my only point is there might be some areas that...
Yeah, there's a stream crossing there, there would have to be another one there, too.
Right, but up in that kind of forested area. Yeah.
But it had to be another crossing.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yep. And then the last two, and I think, Brad, you've kind of asked the same thing and I might ask the same, but maybe in a different way, just the way I'm thinking of it. But we've got Southeastern Parkway, you've got 113th Street, and I've heard a little bit of talk about passing blisters. So I'm kind of thinking of it in the following way. And I know A&amp;F does our overall vision on traffic, but if this is developed and then you also have other open properties to the east, to the north, to the south, as those are developed, I think we probably have an idea of these intersections like 113th and Cynthia Ann, Southeastern and, and, sorry, Southeastern, Cynthia Ann, Southeastern and 113th Street, what those are, what they look like, then also what the width of the roads would need to be at, say, a certain amount of build-out. And the reason I bring that up is if we could look at that now, I think it helps to know, like for instance, along Southeastern, you've got several of the lots. And I've heard ideas of passing blister. Do we have enough right-of-way for what we might want to do in the future? Everything else is built, built out. I'd rather have the situation where it's already set up, so that we're not just doing a passing blister, that we have something a little bit more larger, if in the future that's more of a wider road section that's needed. Maybe not for this project, but for future projects, once they're all together and tied together.
We will be dedicating our half. We'll dedicate our half of the thoroughfare plan right-of-way if it's not already there. So we'll be dedicating our half at no cost.
Right. But part of what I'm asking is just, and it's not really you, it's more A&amp;F to kind of look and just give us some comfort that the right-of-way section is good based on the certain build-outs that we're starting to see.
Sure, okay.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. So ordinance 051820B was given first reading and we'll now go to the Planning Commission for review next month, or this month, next month. We're going on to the regular items, number 11. Is there any unfinished, finished business or new business, Chris? Okay. We'll move on to the community comments. I'm now going to open it up for community comment. Any member of the public wishing to address the council will be given three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. I don't know if we have a list going around.
For the record, Scott Sunderland, 16928 Southeastern Parkway. So sounds pretty familiar. I'm actually at 113th and Southeastern. I'm the property owner on the corner. Want to thank you guys for your time tonight. So when I moved out, which it's been a 20-year journey in Fishers, from apartment a year in Lantern Road to Windermere for eight years, to Masthead for 11 years, and now to Southeastern last year, that was the location, right? Where we can do what we need to do with our property, build the house I want to stay in forever. Looked at the schools, I have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. My eight-year-old went to Southeastern last year, inaugural year, awesome school, was so excited. Last week, we drove by, she said, why are they building a barn beside it? Guys know what the barn is beside it? It's the expanded classrooms, second year. There's no way the population of student enrollment is going down when there's 677 permits in the end of 2019 approved in those PUDs. So with the PUDs to us and the neighbors, and I think I differ greatly, and Mr. Harden, I appreciate his 20-minute answer on, did the price go up for the duplexes? But it wasn't about the duplexes and the PUDs, that was a gimme, right? They knew they weren't getting duplexes in there. That was already removed before first reading. That wasn't our primary concern on that call and it's not empty nesters. His developer corrected him. No, it's not empty nesters. These are young families that go after these homes on our virtual meeting. That means more kids, right? As a guy across the street, I also want to remind you, 6,000 square foot lot, that's over seven per acre. And we're talking about not being monotonous? And, and we ask questions like, do we have a plan for the thoroughfare? Of course we do, the 2040 plan. I was proud when Fishers put that together. Mr. Harden was on one of the boards, so was Mr. Becker. They put this together, they used Hawthorne Ridge and Hamilton proper as what this area should look like. They took pictures of it in the plan. Do you guys know Hawthorne Ridge? Does this look like? It's going to look like Hawthorne Ridge. Most of the houses on there wouldn't fit on these lots. I'm looking at, I mean, I appreciate you removing an exit because now I have two, double the traffic across from my lot exit. I'm looking at 30, 40 garage doors, which the developer told me was a bonus, they were able to turn those around so that we could see those garage doors from our property instead of the backyard. That's the kind of stuff we're hearing. That's the kind of stuff we're hearing. I'm not the only one. Our schools are too crowded. The road has a thoroughfare plan, 120-foot, shouldn't be half, you have agriculture right there. If you need to get your 120 feet for a primary artery, get it now. Take it from the agriculture land before you set it up, so at least it's good. It's zoned R2, I give you that. It probably shouldn't be. Everything around it's estate size, but somehow, back when the wisdom of the 2040 plan, they decided the future plan use should be R2 as well, and low res, which is one to two dwellings per acre, not seven on an acre. And then you take into account, to your point, the waterways and the woods, and not this when you're finding your average, but when they do the average of plots, they're clear wiping the board, and they're saying how many would fit.
Thank, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Should I use show up to Planning Commission?
I will.
Which means next month.
Do you want the southeast corner where you live?
Yes.
Where you live.
Very good.
Thank you.
So, yeah, the first, July 1st, Chris?
Yeah.
6 o'clock. Hopefully, we'll be back at City Hall.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank, thank you for your time, sir. Anybody else wishing to come up and make a comment?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three, three minutes.
Yep. My name's Eric Moore. My current address is, I live in Zionsville, but I recently purchased a property, 16478 Southeastern. It's 23 and a half acres on the east side, as it relates to this, it's the property right here, this is the entrance to my property. As being a longtime resident of Zionsville, I've been looking to purchase a home or a piece of property to build my forever home with my wife. We ultimately found that. I found out after, I was under contract about this particular project. I did close on the property. My property, too, is zoned R2, and it's, there's a lot of talk about the fact that because it's zoned R2, that some developer could just come in here and, you know, slap homes under those particular, and that, that is true, they, they could do that. But given the beauty of this particular area, I purchased 23 and a half acres to build a single family dwelling on it, to be able to do, again, much like Scott said, do what I want to do, have additional elbow room, have an outbuilding. And I'm extremely confident, for the same reasons that I came from Zionsville, which is a beautiful community, to Fishers, to now be a resident for the next 20, 30 years, to be able to be in an area where it looks as though, you know, the way it looks today, right? And ultimately, I didn't buy and spend a significant amount of money to buy 23 and a half acres to look at, you know, homes on 6,000 square foot lots lined up all the way down Southeastern. And obviously, as I spend more time there, you see, you know, the traffic from IMI and, you know, tandem axle, you know, dump trucks and so on and so forth. I mean, the, the traffic on, on Southeastern, you know, certainly is a concern. But then I, Scott didn't mention it, but I know he copied me on it. He sent all of you councilmen a document this morning as it relates to this particular project, and there's some really good information that I think sums up a lot of how the existing neighborhood feels and, and some of the current concerns that we've discussed as it relates to that. So I would just encourage you guys to, to please take a look at it, and if there's, if there are additional people that we could send some of that information to that's in the planning and zoning, that maybe can, can have reference to that, I would certainly love to, to know who that is and how we can address it from that perspective as well. So that's what I have, but thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
July 1st, I'll be there for sure.
Do we have any other people present here that would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, please, you have three, three minutes.
My name, my name is Roland Schlot, I live at 16501 Southeastern Parkway. I live right here on this turn, and there's multiple wrecks here in this garden. I can't even get out of my driveway. I've been there over 40 years, okay? And when Mr. Becker moved in, he wanted the same type of low-density to enjoy his property. Now he's leaving. We should keep that 2040 plan, he was on the board about it. Six councilmen were on that same planning board to have this division. People didn't come out here to spend all this money on their property and then come in and even entertain the idea of duplexes. It's almost an insult. So when I got my letter back in March, I called Paul Rio, and I said, you going to put a buffer in for me or something? You know, I'm, I'm 25-foot elevated, I'll see nothing but hundreds of treetops, I mean rooftops. And his answer was, well, no matter what we do, you're going to see them. That was it. And then they're going to build, the first proposal had four houses in the back. This wouldn't have been increased growth to my property, okay? So what guarantees do I have that people's not going to be coming on my property? I'm zoned ER. Now, the Maguires didn't want it either, and that's the other 17, 17 acres that's ER. They were opposed, but they were leaving this spring anyway. So they contacted Paul, and they decided to give them a land option. If we can get this zoning changed, then we will buy you out. Now, there's a lot of concerns about traffic, and nobody can sit here and honestly say that this needs to be addressed, not two years, three years, five years, something needs to be done now. And everybody knows, we're saturated with subdivisions, there's plenty of them. And so they're going to ruin this whole area that people that live in this area, that come to Fishers, know about this area. That's why they ride bicycles out there. And you're going to take all that away, you know, with low-end housing. And so another question would be, why are they extending their lot size by Nestle Down Farms, but they're not doing anything for me? And so I reached out to them, and that's the kind of answers I'm getting.
Sir, you have about 15 seconds. Do you have any comments?
Well, I got plenty of comments, and I'll be here for more.
In 15 seconds?
And so, oh, yeah, and Mr. Harden seemed to think when we had neighborhood meeting that Fishers was okay with, they wouldn't be this far along if they didn't see an issue with traffic.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak this evening?
Kind of weird walking up here. Doug Allman, Fall Creek Township resident, trustee, and 30-plus-year resident. I, I think there's been a lot of great comments that captured what, what this area is. My, my only comments have been, is that realistically, that some of the traffic issues in this area need to be addressed. I agree with Brad. I mean, Brad, Brad and I argued hard that Cynthia Ann should have been extended down. That way, if you would have created this development, you could have entered from that, that road, from Cynthia Ann Road, if it was extended down. Mr. Becker fought that, and, you know, others fought this. In fact, a lot of this land has been rezoned E, rez, ER, because our mayor said that we needed places for executives and those in the business community to come in and build larger estate lots. So now, now that Mr. Becker's left, we don't need that anymore, and I don't know what's changed other than he's moved. So it seems hypocritical to me that we, we designed this area, we wanted, we wanted ER-type lots, and now that he's left, we can just develop the heck out of it. Fishers has never put a new road in this area at all. I mean, we've had no new roads. And let's be real, 113th Street, the way that, that is, it falls off greatly, those trees are going to have to come out of there, there's going to be traffic. With all the development that still is underway and taking place, 113th and that tree canopy is going to be gone. If, if, realistically, to build in this area, that's going to have to be done. Cynthia Ann Road should have came down, why we didn't do that, beyond me. And, and one of the things with the schools, schools have never been right about their demographics. I mean, as already pointed out, we, we build an elementary school that's already at capacity overcrowded, and the school board, I've talked to some of their members recently, they have no idea of the impact and the growth that still needs to, they're not preparing for this. They really aren't. There's not a good communication going on here. The township bought 20 acres for an element, off of an elementary school. They need that back, and yet they're not even talking about it. So there's, there's a lot from the bigger view that needs to be done before we continue to put more homes in this area. And again, some of those sentiments have already been very well-stated, so, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak this evening? Okay. Being that there's nobody else, I'm going to close the community comment period. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? So moved by Pete Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by David George. This meeting is adjourned, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your patience this evening as we move locations and we work on our, having our meeting electronically and telephonically. Thank you, have a nice evening.